Good morning, it's 8:30, I'll call this morning's meeting to order. The first order of business is the approval of the agenda. We do have an agenda addition to approve the filling of an Assistant County Attorney position. We'll take that right away as our item before the Deputy Sheriff.
Motion to approve with addition?
Motion to approve with addition.
Second.
And a second, any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Citizens to be heard, moving into our citizens to be heard portion. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on anything not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move into the approval of payment of bills and vouchers.
Move approval.
We have a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
And a second, any further discussion or questions? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. The next item is we'd like to recognize a donation from Concordia College to our Sheriff's Office in the amount of $500. Thank you very much for that donation, generosity is very much appreciated. And Jenny, we'll take that agenda addition now. Good morning.
Thank you, good morning, and thank you for having me here. Both Mr. Melton and I start trials this morning at 9 o'clock, so thank you for pushing us to the front here. This item is to fill an opening in our Criminal Division for an Assistant County Attorney. It's not a new position, it's an existing position, and it's certainly a necessary position to maintain our current caseloads. Did the, yes, I see the worksheet did come in your packet, so it would come with a considerable cost savings, both this budget cycle and for the foreseeable future, and so we would ask for permission to fill that position. It would be a new hire, there would be no internal fill, it would be a brand-new hire.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion to approve and a second, any further discussion, questions? If not, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Thank you very much.
All right, item number two, Sheriff request, and Steve Lansum requests to approve the filling of the vacancy for Deputy in the Sheriff's Office. Good morning.
We're here asking for approval to hire a full-time employee to replace retiring Deputy Michael Hoenig.
What are the Board's wishes?
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor of the motion, or any other discussion, I'm sorry. Need to expedite that. Now, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you. You've got a few retirements coming up.
Yeah, probably one or two more before the end of the year.
Okay. Well, good luck recruiting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item is not scheduled till 8:40, and because it's a public hearing, we're going to wait on that, I think, did I see Diane came in? Diane, do we take yours?
Good morning.
Good morning.
So on your packet you got the compliance report, and it's shortly due. We met last week, and we moved it up a little earlier because I'm going to be retiring.
Oh, my gosh.
So, we were 100% compliant.
Great.
And we put together, in 2016, we decided to just keep it easy. The amount of money we thought we were going to get in, that's the amount of money we would be spending. I'm a little bit conservative, because I think the first time I came to you guys, we were looking at a deficit of like $5,000, so. Any questions, or?
Questions for Diane.
I'm on the Compliance Committee, and I think Diane's got everything in order, and she's done a great job with that, so.
Thank you.
I have a question. Diane, is there a, I noticed on our proposed balance that we're keeping it the same as it was last year. Are there, are there restrictions on how much we can carry over?
No, no. Sometimes, at meetings when I first started as a recorder, people had almost a lot of money, half a million dollars in their budget.
Well, not Clay County, but...
Not Clay County, has never, we've always shared. I did a report this morning, and since 2005, we have allocated $1.7 million to share. The Recorder's Office has gotten none of that, because we're able to function on the other monies that we get.
Sure.
Our equipment fund. But from the equipment fund, as you can see, we also, I did a journal entry for $50,000 to help the Technologies Services also. And we're able to pay all of our software fees, which totals about $30,000 right now, and our software company, I just signed the contract, and that went up a little bit, but with the amount of subscriptions we have, and some of the other things that we have, we're able to maintain a status quo.
You need a motion to approve?
I, I think we need a recommendation for dispersment of funds, correct?
Right.
Make that motion, second.
A motion to approve the recommendation and a second. Any further discussion?
Just clarification, these are for the 2019 funds, right?
Right, yeah. I'm always ahead of the game.
It's good to be. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Well, Diane, it was great to have this report as always, because it's, you were in 100% compliance, but I know I can speak for the rest of the Board when I want to do a premature retirement thank you to you for your service. You've come to the Board several times, I don't want to date you, but I also want you to know that we really appreciate your work here, so thank you.
Well, thank you, I've really enjoyed working for Clay County, it's always going to be my home, but as some of you know, my home is not in this county anymore, but Clay County is always going to be home to me. But, thank you, and I don't know, you know, what your plans are, but if there's going to be an appointment in the future, we have to get moving on it a little bit, since my last day is the 27th of April, and, yeah, for the visitor here, I will be on vacation.
Yeah, you know, I had a phone call with Brian Berg last week about that, and so here's discussion and motion.
Okay, so.
Big shoes to fill, but we'll try to do our best.
Thank you very much, it's been a lot, a lot of fun, and I've really enjoyed it, thank you.
All right, we still have a couple minutes. Do you have, it sounded like Diane was laughing. We'll do a couple committee reports, correct, just to fill, but...
Yeah, I could do mine.
Okay, Commissioner Campbell.
Okay, last, last Tuesday, just wanted to mention that I did attend the, the Jail Ministry's annual banquet at the Courtyard, and it was very well attended, and I, with our jail staff that was there, gave really good reports on that project. We did meet Wednesday with, regarding juvenile detention, and the proposed plan that we're going to be hearing more about this morning, going over the financial numbers to make sure that that's all still going to flow correctly. And Thursday morning, we had the Clay County Joint Powers Meeting, and on the agenda that morning was an update, Brian, or Brian Berg gave an update on the juvenile, Regional Juvenile Center, and then we heard from Morehead Public Schools on how their plan went for their last bonds, and how they dealt with all the different school upgrades, and overall, it was a good update, and they met all of their goals that they had in mind, so that's all I had.
Thank you. All right, we are within a minute, so why don't we take the public hearing? There was appeal of the County Planning Commission's decision to grant approval of the conditional use permit for the Sandbeck Race Development. I believe Dave Anderson from Morehead Public Service, but I see Bill Schwan is here, and also Chris and John Bolger. So, Tim?
Let me move, we open.
We have a motion to open the public hearing, and a second. All right, Tim, if you'd like to...
Let me just give you a quick overview of what was proposed at the Planning Commission meeting in February. We had a, two conditional use permits in front of us for a property you might be familiar with, that's located just, it's on Highway, County Road 9, excuse me, County Road 11, south of the Morehead Airport, right here. This is top-end drag strip, right here, the airport, and then a couple, this is a residential site, and this is another residential site. This is the Benedict Grand. The proposals were for storage buildings, and then also in one of the storage buildings, use of part of that building as an auto repair shop. It's in the Limited Highway Commercial zoning district, both of those uses are allowed in the Limited Highway Commercial zoning district. Plan is to build two buildings now, and those two buildings are in parallel on County Road 11. Two buildings somewhere in the future, exactly when is not known. The buildings will be similar in nature to this, high walls, you can get big toys in. And then in the easternmost building, the very southern end down here, would be utilized by the applicant for an auto repair shop. The Planning Commission debated this, representatives of Morehead Public Service were there. In the end, both conditional use permits were moved for approval, and were approved on unanimous vote. Subsequent to that, Morehead Public Service has made an appeal to the issuance of the permits. We've had something happen in this particular situation that we haven't had happen before, and we intended to come here with Morehead Public Service making their appeal, and having the Board deliberate, but last week, Morehead Public Service and the applicant actually sat down and came to an agreement. There were some documents that were on your table today, and the top one was an agreement on a conditional use permit. That's the document that the Public Service and the applicant came to. We got it on Friday. So anyway, they've come to an agreement. The problem is that the things that they have agreed to there actually need to be brought in, or conditional use permits, so this, this public hearing is, can be the place where that is done. So anyway, Morehead Public Service reps are here, the CUP recipient is here. I guess if you've got any particular questions or me, relative to the permitting, or the process that went on, the concern here at the time, you know that this is in the area of the Buffalo Aquifer. We had an aquifer protection district that used to overlay this particular piece of property. We had a request a number of years back to change the zoning on it, it was changed to limited highway commercial, with the overlay remaining, which really didn't do anything for it, because if you changed it to limited highway commercial, you could do lots of things on it. When you put the overlay back on it, it took all of those rights away. So the overlay district was actually removed from this site, as well as some other property north of State 94.
So the entire blueprint where these will go, there's not overlay?
The property on which these buildings are proposed is not in the overlay district for the aquifer. It is in the Limited Highway Commercial zoning district, in which both of these uses are allowed.
So it's no longer part of the wellhead protection area?
This was never part of the wellhead protection area. Wellhead protection for the city of Morehead is further north.
Further north?
Yeah. The wells along Highway 10, their wellhead protection, drinking water supply management area doesn't come south of 29, or 94, and then the ones that are even further north, it doesn't, they don't come down Highway 10, so. So it's not in a drinking water supply management area, it's part of the wellhead protection. It was just in the, the wellhead overlay district that we, we applied actually across, across the board on all of the Buffalo Aquifer, for all practical purposes. North of where the council's south going on.
So we can go through the highlighted additions that we're going to protect?
Yes, the other documents that were included this morning, in the packet this morning, the highlighted conditions are the conditions that were agreed to by Public Service and the applicant. One was that for the four buildings planned, they not have more than three bathrooms in any given building, and that the holding tanks be in compliance with our environmental regulations.
Which is in ordinance, we're just, I mean, so it has to happen, we're just adding it into the CUP.
We're putting it, putting the language in. The other one was, each side of the building where there's access doors, that there be a continuous concrete apron 20 feet wide in front of those doors for the length of the building. That gives a parking area, so you can park your vehicles on an imperious surface outside the buildings. And then the last one is that all the vehicles that are parked outside the buildings, that aren't parked inside the buildings, be parked on those concrete aprons all of that.
I have a question on that one.
Commissioner Campbell?
Excuse me, if I read number five, it says outdoor storage should not be allowed anywhere in the property, then I read number 12, all vehicles which are parked, not parked inside, must be parked on an apron. Aren't they going to be outside the building?
These, anybody that's doing just strictly storage, that all needs to be inside. With the repair facility, we did make some allowance for up to 10 cars that could be parked on the outside, waiting, either being picked up, waiting to go into the shop, that sort of thing. So that, the 10 cars on the outside, which is the number 11, was intended to be for the business and not the storage facility part of it.
I guess I've got one more question, number six, hours of operation. I guess I'm not really acquainted with any place that doesn't operate on a Saturday, or go out there. Does that mean they can't go out there on a Saturday, work on a vehicle?
The hours of operation, again, were applicable to the, the auto repair business itself. Everything else was available 24/7 on a year-round basis.
Right, I mean, the owner can go there whenever he wants.
Yeah. Anybody who's got a rental building there can go whenever they want, because it's not going to be fenced, but the business itself operates from 7 to 6.
We can ask the applicant if that's a problem. Anything else, Tim?
No, no.
All right, if not, I'll ask if the, the appealing party would like to speak? Just for the record, please, sir, if you'd state your name and...
Yes, John Bolger, and I'm an attorney for Morehead Public Service, and with me today are Bill Schwan, the General Manager of Morehead Public Service, and Chris Knutson, the Water Division Manager. Morehead Public Service supplies water for the city of Morehead, city of Dilworth, and we're always concerned about the protection of our water source. One of our main water sources, we don't have to use it all the time, but we need to have it available, is the Buffalo Aquifer, so we were concerned when this application came forward. Rather than go into everything that was discussed, in light of our concern, we appealed the decision of the Planning Commission. We received a letter from Clay County encouraging us to meet with the applicant, the Sandbeck Organization, and to try to work out something that would be acceptable to both parties. I saw representatives, in fact, the whole group is here right now, and it was a very cordial meeting, we agreed on terms that would be acceptable to both. We got that information to Tim Magnuson within hours of the agreement having been reached, and Tim included them in the proposed conditional use permit, highlighted in yellow. We're satisfied that that addresses our concerns correctly, and we're pleased that we were able to work things out with Sandbeck.
Thank you. Any questions from Mr. Bolger? I think that both Chris and Mr. Bolger were at the Planning Commission meeting on the 27th, so they heard this, and I think just to clarify that a lot of what has been added in the agreement, for the most part, as I said earlier, is, is within ordinance, but I think Morehead Public Service really wanted to have that on the permit specifically, so I think to have that clarification and have both parties comfortable is something that we're, we're happy to have. Commissioner Campbell?
Thank you. I, I just want to get somebody's opinion on the, I, I like what's happened here, I think that's good, and I've been involved with that whole wellhead protection thing from the beginning, and I, I share the concern about, obviously, the drinking water. My, my question goes to, how are we designating that portion that is an auto repair place? And I say that from the standpoint of, what if down the road, that changes to something else? What, what, what's going to be allowed and what's not going to be allowed? And maybe that's addressed to you, Tim.
Well, right now, a conditional use permit would be for an auto repair facility.
Okay, and it's, and that's designated by, within that building?
That application.
Right, that, okay.
If that were to change, the use were to change, that would require a different conditional use permit, or whatever, as proposed. The storage buildings, I think that there's a requirement on it that there's not any commercial use that takes place in any of the storage buildings, other than the shop, the auto repair shop. So it's not, the permit itself doesn't allow him to rent out to a contractor who's going to use it as his base of operations for a business. The intent is that it be storage only.
I guess I, I've just seen, I know that we've had some issues, for example, on Highway 75 North, where we've had in the past some change in uses, and I just want to make sure that we don't get ourselves into a pickle with the aquifer issues later down the road, that's, that's all. I, but I guess, if it require another permit, then that's...
The whole process that we have to conduct.
I guess if there was somebody, if Mr. Sandbeck decided not to do business there anymore, and that, we had a chemical facility that wanted to store materials there, we have issues with that.
Yes, that's...
In the ordinance provisions, we're not allowing that.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I do, I do have to agree with the question of Gross, that we have some issues with hours of operation.
Right.
That we have to sort out.
Any further comments?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Mr. Sandbeck, would you like to speak? I think we have a question on hours for you. Good morning.
Good morning.
And thank you for the potential of transferring a business into Clay County, this is something that this entire Board really appreciates, so. Mr. Magnuson?
Well, for the storage units, we have hours of operation from 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday. That, I don't believe, is what we discussed, I think we talked, and I might have to go back and check the minutes on this. Since it wasn't fenced, the hours of operation there were...
Yeah, 24/7.
24/7, 6 to 5.
I think the hours were for the, for the Sandbeck, so...
Yeah, the problem is, on your permit for Sandbeck, the hours are the same.
I think we changed them in the last meeting.
I was going to say that because, I think we discussed, for instance, someone coming back from the lake on a Sunday evening with a camper, to allow that person to be able to drop that off, and I see Bill Davis is here from the Planning Commission as well, was that your understanding on the storage, that it would be a 24-hour access?
Yeah, but you use it at any time of day, you're resident, you're stuck.
Then my question would be, for the, the actual repair shop, we have hours of operation Monday through Friday, from 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM. That's appropriate?
Yep. I think we had changed it from, you know, 9:00, in case we got there earlier, to 8:00, I believe it was, wasn't it? In the last week? 7?
I was going to say, on the other permit, it was from 7:00 to 6:00. Either one, I guess we just need to nail it down.
And you don't need Saturday?
What's that?
You don't need Saturday?
Um, we prefer not to work Saturdays, but...
I just mean if we're, if we're making sure that we have this correct, if you think you'll need it Sunday, Saturday, we should add Saturday.
I guess that would be nice to have, just in case.
So we'd be looking at for a repair shop, adding days and hours of operation, making it Monday through Saturday, and using the hours from 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM.
7 to 6, then changing the other one to 24-hour, correct?
Why are we limiting hours of operation? Why do we need to be out at 6:00?
I, I think it's just consistency, what the Planning Commission typically does is add hours for a business.
I mean, we ask the applicant, you know, if their hours of operation are going to be, and that's what we incorporate in the permit. I mean, not to say that Mr. Sandbeck can't be in his, in his facility, you know, at any time of the day, but vehicles coming and going.
Any other questions and comments? Mr. Sandbeck, do you have anything else to add?
No.
Thank you. Is there any, anyone else who wishes to speak during the open hearing?
Move to closing.
We have a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
And a second. All right, discussion?
Well, I, so we have this, we have this document that's been worked out amongst those two parties, and there's new conditions being added, and is it, is it our responsibility is just to add the conditions, right? It's documented?
Yes, if you have the opportunity to do it here, otherwise, if, even if you say yes, you agree to these conditions, if you don't adopt the amended permits, then they'll wind up taking it back to Planning Commission again.
I, yeah, and which I don't think is necessary, but I, I just want to know, are we adopting this agreement, or are we just making changes to the conditions?
Molding it into the conditions of the permit on each one, correct?
Yes, I think that in your motion, you can reference the, the agreement between Public Service and the applicant. I don't think you have to...
We need to go through facts and findings, and we can...
Oh, yeah.
If I can find them. Any other questions on comments? Well, that's for the second one, where's the... Okay. Any other questions on this? We'll take these, there are two permits, so we'll take each one, start with the general use, storage buildings. We'll go through the facts of findings, if there's any issues that you feel like there are, that have or have not been addressed in the conditions, you know. Facts of findings, number one is the effect of use. Use and enjoyment of other property, development of surrounding property.
In your packet, you got it in your packet, which one?
Utilities, access roads, drainage, off-street parking and loading spaces. I think adequate, I just want to note that the drainage issues are addressed in condition number one, where the applicant must obtain all applicable state, local, federal permits, including septic systems, stormwater, pollution control. Nuisance conditions, burden on public services. Again, I believe that with the addition of what the agreement was, that addresses any concerns with the water supply. Compatibility, appearance and structure of site, relationship to overall needs, the consistency with an ordinance, conflict with comprehensive plans, traffic hazards, congestion in floodplain areas... areas, and existing businesses. So what we would be doing is a motion to accept the conditional use permit with the new conditions one through 12, making the note of the change of two, nine, and 12 from the agreement, but also changing number six to 24-hour operations. It's the board's wishes.
I make a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve by Commissioner Gross with the conditions.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. The second application is for the permit for the auto repair shop establishment. Go through the facts and findings again. The effect of use. Use and enjoyment of other property. Development of surrounding property. Utilities, access roads, drainage, off-street parking, and loading spaces. And again, the additions, I believe, satisfy that concern. Nuisance conditions. Burden on public services. Again, important to note that the water supply concern has been adequately addressed with the additions. Compatibility. Appearance of structure and site. Relationship to overall needs. Consistency with ordinance. Conflict with comprehensive plans. Traffic hazards, congestions in floodplain areas, and existing businesses. Noting for that one, the change in the conditional use permit to number two, nine, and 11, and also the addition, the change in number six from the hours from 7:00 to 6:00, Monday through Saturday. Any comments or questions? If not, what are the board's wishes?
I would, I would move approval with the changes, and also adding the worked out, really agreed upon document as part of the record.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Just to clarify, is the record on both permits? Because we didn't do that on the first.
Yes.
We didn't act on that, though.
Hmm?
Well, we didn't act on that on the first.
Oh, well, I want it to be part of this one.
Okay, all right. Okay, so everyone feels like that concern has been addressed and added in. Okay? Any further discussion? All those in favor on the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Tim. Thank you to the parties for their flexibility. Thank you to the Sandbeks, again, for adding a business in Clay County. All right, we'll move to our number five item, which is the bid opening. Not here. Not here, we're a little early. Mr. Haney, can you please do your committee and committee reports?
Yes. On Thursday, I attended, along with Commissioner Campbell, the, Mr. Berg, the Clay County Joint Powers Meeting, and it was just as Commissioner Campbell said. And we also discussed the location of the Clay County Joint Powers Retreat that's going to take place in January of 2019, and we're looking at the training, three training rooms in the LEC for that venue, and there's been some arrangements made after that meeting. And then I also attended the Children's Mental Health LEC meeting.
That's what I was reading.
And we had a discussion about the acute shortage of psychologists, and how that's impacted all of these organizations that are dealing with this, and I really didn't understand that until that meeting, and it's very daunting and very challenging, and something we're going to have to address, especially with our new behavioral health unit. So, anyway, that was very interesting, and that's all I had.
Okay. All right, Commissioner Gross, do you want to do your...
Tuesday, after a meeting, I went to Senator Ekin and Representative Paul Markler at Old Town Hall meetings, and I attended those of Ullah, Dilworth, Barnesville, and Holly. There's some good questions, and good dialogue going on there. Tuesday night, the Yale Ministry, which we already talked about. Wednesday, Tina Smith, the new senator, opened up her office, and, well, it's been open, but I attended that grand opening there. And Friday, I went to the watershed board. Where they're discussing the one watershed, one plan, and I think Bruce and Houston Engineering got that all pretty well under control and working on it. Saturday morning, I went to the Legends Conference held at the VFW in Dilworth. Monday, Minnesota Rural Counties with ITV thing going on that we discussed. I'm trying to find my notes on that. I guess Dan Larson just tell us about where they're, what they're going, and what they're working on, and a few things, nothing to do with that one, I don't think, unless you've got something that you wrote down, I think, other than buffer and a few other things. After that, I went to the Hartham Trail Meeting in Holly. There, again, there's not much we can do there yet, until we find out whether we get some funds from the state, and that we're going to find out until May 21st, so we're looking at that. With the snowmobile clubs there, they're concerned that these trails we're putting in won't be for snowmobiles, because they feel some of their regional trails are not allowing snowmobiles out there, but since this is a state one, that's snowmobiles. However, we all know that on paved trail, that's where the snow is going to melt first, so it's going to be tough for making a snowmobile trail year-round, I mean, during winter months. But they also said that the snowmobile club can also provide some funds to help that thing go. Then last night, I went to a fighting township, in Ullah Township, and just sat in their meetings and discussed the juvenile center, the correctional facility, and a few other items.
Commissioner Campbell has a question.
I just, you had mentioned on the Veterans Conference, that was, this year it was held on a Saturday morning.
Yes.
Was there a good turnout for that?
I would say it wasn't that great a one, you know, but...
It seems to me, Grant, wasn't, didn't they used to have that on Friday?
Yeah, they tried a different format this year, too, some different...
Yeah, they didn't have speakers, they just had tables set up for each different, you know, each group had their table set up, and you had to go to the table, and if you had, wanted to get some information.
Okay.
They weren't presenters.
Thank you.
Yes?
That's it.
All right, Commissioner Whelan?
Well, let's see, I had a recorders' compliance meeting, and Diane already went over that, and I had, had a meeting on the detention project that we're going to be discussing here in a few minutes, so we'll be going over that here shortly. And then I was with Frank, we had the Minnesota Rural Counties Meeting yesterday, and, yeah, we were just going over a lot of things we're working on legislatively. One of the things is broadband funding for rural Minnesota, and that's one they've been struggling with for a while and trying to find funding, but I think they're making some headway on that. And had a lot of discussion on a no-net gain issue with the state in terms of property. A lot of counties are concerned about the state and the DNR acquiring too much property and them losing some of their tax base, so that was it for me.
Yes.
Talking about that no-net gain, and I see we just got a letter from the Nature Conservatory, and that they're going to get 156 acres again. I mean, I don't have a problem with that, but I thought we were trying to, if they buy land, they have to give up so much land. Are we concerned about that yet, or, I don't know?
I think it's a continued discussion point. I do want to note that we did forward an announcement to the township officers of this plan, so they...
So they're aware of this?
Yeah, we, Mr. Thompson was sent a notification last week in regards to it.
Okay. Because that's one of the concerns when I get to the meetings more towards the western part of the county, when most of this stuff is happening.
Eastern.
Excuse me, eastern. Get turned around here. Where they're concerned about land being bought up.
Yeah, okay. Commissioner Haney has...
Yes, I forgot to include in my report that on Wednesday, I attended the City of Moorhead Planning Meeting, and the Comstock neighborhood citizens came, and they removed their appeal of the conditional use permit for the parking lot issue over there, on the red door property, and the developer has agreed to build a house on the one corner on the Sixth Avenue and between, at the corner of Sixth Avenue and Ninth Street. So that was amenable to all parties, and we moved ahead on that.
Okay, good flexibility. Commissioner Whelan, were you through?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we are now to the, can we do, is it advertised at 9:20 opening?
Yep.
Okay. All right, well, then we'll, can we switch to the discussion on the juvenile? Is that going to take longer?
Madam Chair.
The advertisement's for my end, so we're okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. All right, well, let's do the bid opening for the Cassa Highway 10. I apologize. Good morning.
Good morning.
All right, so this is the bid opening for the paving on Cassa 10. This is the one we received the state grant for.
Yeah.
Received our normal contractors, it looks like. And as usual, we got our electronic bids. We did receive four electronic bids this time. The first one was Central Specialties.
That's just also before, the engineer's estimate was $1,087,998.45.
Yep.
When it reference?
Yep.
Okay.
And there were no addendums on this project.
Okay.
And Central Specialties submitted their bid at 8:29 a.m. It was a complete bid with the bid bond, and the bid amount is $928,749.11. That's $928,749.11.
Okay.
The next bidder was Knife River Materials. Their bid was submitted at 8:03 a.m. It was a complete bid with a bid bond present, and bid amount is $989,369.25. That's $989,369.25. The next bidder was Mark Sand and Gravel. Bid was submitted at 8:52 a.m. Complete bid with bid bond present. The bid amount was $1,013,013.36. $1,013,013.36. The next bidder was RJ Zaverell and Sons. Bid was submitted at 7:40 a.m. It's a complete bid, and they submitted their bid bond in paper, which we allow. So we'll open that. I guess I'll read the amount here while I have it up, though. The bid amount was $1,127,541. That's $1,127,541. Bid bond, so, yep, bid bond is present, and the amount of 5 percent.
Okay.
So it should be good.
So that was our four electronic?
Yep. And then we did receive two traditional ones, paper bids. The first one here is from border states. Looks like we do have the bid bond present, and the amount of 5 percent. And the total bid amount is $1,242,534.90. That's $1,242,534.90. And our last bid is from Northern Improvement. Bid bond is present, amount of 5 percent. And the final bid is $1,089,163.42. That's $1,089,163.42.
All right, so we have the bids. There is a low bid, so I assume you're looking for the approval with the contingency that it meets all the review?
Yep. And a low bidder?
Central Specialties.
I would move approval.
We have a motion to approve Central Specialties.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. I'm really excited to get that done.
Thank you.
All right, moving into our number six item, which is the guaranteed maximum price for the juvenile expansion project. Mr. Berg, Steve Larson, Ben Matson, and Kerry from... Kerry here.
Good morning.
Can we go the other way, too?
Yep.
All right.
Thank you.
So we have the, both the non-secure and the secure sheets in front of us.
Well, Madam Chair, if I may, good morning. I'd like to just touch on this a little bit to kind of summarize something on it. What you have before you this morning, yes, is the secure and non-secure, and construction engineers, Ben Matson sitting to my left here, is going to present the two separate projects, and I just wanted to probably give you just an overview, a little tiny bit, because we've gone over this in detail a month and a half ago, and the figures haven't changed a great deal since then. But I just wanted to mention that if you choose to approve this project, and that is the request today, after going over it, we will move in after the break for approval to, for the bond sale of $7.3 million. And I guess I just wanted to assure you that in reviewing the figures this morning of the bid prices, and the bonding prices, and the breakdown of the expectation of the bond sale, and the costs of the bond, have been broken down into the budgets of each of the secure and non-secure, and they are incorporated into the established budget that we've gone over in the past, and the bond payments will be covered by the current established budget. be covered by the current established budget. So what I'm saying is, is the price that's coming in that he's going to talk to you about, and if that is approved, and then the bond sale is approved, and the bonds come in at approximately the rate of what it's estimated to be, that that will all fit into the budgeting process of which has been established. I know that can be a little confusing, hopefully I tried to make that simple.
Clear.
So with that, probably if I could, turn it over to Steve, the director, and any comments, and then it'll go to Ben.
I don't have any comments. I guess at this point I'll just probably turn it to Ben, and I'll be open for any questions if there are any.
Okay, so Construction Engineers advertised for bids on this project and received them in our office on March twenty-ninth. In time since that, we've gone over them, reviewed them for completeness, and have now compiled them with the numbers you see in front of you. The good news is that we were able to get a lot of numbers. It's a good time to bid, and numbers came in quite competitive, I think, so. The sheet, the first sheet you see in front of you is the numbers for the secure facility. When we were here in February, the sheet we show here shows you basically your last two estimates in gray. So in February, February fifth, we came to you and we had a number on the construction side of five million nine hundred and sixteen thousand six hundred and fourteen dollars. After getting firm numbers from actual bidders, we're five million nine hundred and seventeen, five hundred and twenty-one, so increased just nine hundred and seventy dollars. So about as close to right on the money as you can get. Below that, we have the soft costs on the project, which include the architectural fees and some other items related to the project, and then the tax rebate, which the county will apply for after sales taxes are paid. So with that, we've also included now an owner contingency, because this is a remodel project. We feel strongly recommend that there needs to be a contingency there for any unforeseen as we go through the remodel there. So that wasn't included in the prior estimate, so with that now, your overall variance from the prior estimate is a hundred and ten thousand three hundred and two dollars more for a total project budget on the secure facility of six million four hundred and seventy-five thousand eight hundred and thirty-six dollars. Any questions in regards to the numbers, sir?
No questions. I just, I think, just to reiterate the importance of what that contingency is, it's obviously come in handy with the two projects that we have going on. Anyone that's decided to do a home remodel lately knows that those unforeseen costs can add up, so I think that's a smart choice. Any other questions? Comments? With that, I think at the bottom of the memo, you're looking for the county board to sign the amended contract for this. That's the next one.
Right, Madam Chair, what we would really appreciate if you choose to move forward with this is two motions on that, and one for Construction Engineers, you're approving the construction budget, but, and then we've, we have other contracts, you know, with the architects and different things that are already in place. But I guess I would just appreciate an overall approval of the total cost of the project as well, so that we're covered for auditing purposes and everything else. So if we could have two motions on it, might be a little overkill, but it...
And then do an over.
Yeah, I would. Appreciate that.
Okay, so start with the big one first. That's the secure only portion.
We'll approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. The non-secure?
Move approval.
We've motioned to approve.
Second.
And a second.
Do we, you want to highlight that at all, Ben?
I can, yep. Basically, same process was gone through on that facility. Again, the numbers are exactly in line with where we'd hoped they would be, so in that case, the non-secure facility on the construction side came in at two million nine hundred and fifty-eight thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars, just four hundred and fifty-three dollars more than the prior estimate from February. And then the overall with the soft costs, again, we included that contingency on that project, so slight variance there where we went from three million one hundred and eighty-two thousand to now our, our GMP estimate here to be three million two hundred and thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and eighteen dollars, increase of fifty-five thousand one hundred and fifty-one dollars for all related to the owner contingency.
Any other questions? If not, we do have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. So there, if we could get an overall approval of both projects, I can, so my couple, do you have a...
If I, if I did my math right, it came to eight million eight seventy-six two eighty-one? For the gross maximum price for the two?
Eight million eight hundred and seventy-six thousand two hundred and eighty-one.
My calculator works. I would, I would move approval of the gross maximum price for the two projects of eight million eight seventy-six two eighty-one.
We have a motion to approve the GMP and a second. Any further discussion?
No.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
You know, Madam Chair, I think it's important for the public to watch, too, to understand that this will be offset by two point five million dollars from Cass County. So I think it's important. And then a significant portion of that will be covered by the other ten member counties. That hasn't been talked about.
I should, sorry.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ben gets more time here than the staff, I think.
I'm more than willing to come back if you got one, so.
All right, I am going to ask that we move into our break quickly, because Shelley's not here. So we'll take a five-minute break. What we're going to do is take our number nine item, which is Steve, he's got a couple of requests. Mine.
Good morning, Madam Chair. We recently had an announcement for retirement. Not any retirement, but John Farber, he's been with our, our agency for thirty-two years. We, we knew that this was pending, but we're hoping that we were going to be able to keep him here for a little bit longer than we did. And John, John, like I mentioned, been here thirty-two years. He's been our only supervisor of our non-secure program for the last twenty-two years, and really developed that program into one of the best programs in the state. So losing him and that institutional knowledge is going to be a big, big challenge for our agency. And so we, we're excited for John and, and all his opportunities from our Gulf and fishing, but sad for, for our agency and his loss. And so I am here today to request his, his replacement. Being that we have anticipated it, we do have, have some, we feel it's a good option at the facility, and so we would request that the position be opened internally and then be able to backfill any, any position that, that becomes open because of that.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve backfill.
Second.
And a second. I just want to state, too, that he really offered some crucial input to the Out of Home Placement Committee and the discussion that followed in how to best address that population. And I think going forward with this expansion, the work that that committee did will really be helpful in, in what this new facility looks like. So thank you for his expertise on that as well.
Absolutely.
So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion back. That passes. The second item we have?
Our second item is, is a replacement of a fleet vehicle. We currently would like to purchase a two thousand and eighteen Dodge Grand Caravan to replace our two thousand and twelve vehicle that has over a hundred and thirty thousand miles. The funds for these are covered in internal service, and, and so we have the cost to cover that.
Are we anticipating less miles go on this because of the expansion that will happen at the juvenile center?
Less miles? Probably not. Probably see more. We're, right now, we're, we've been keeping a fourth vehicle. Generally, we go about three vehicles, but we've been trying to keep that, that last vehicle going a little bit longer. And so, so we would, we would be looking to, to get rid of one van, but we would, we'll, we'll probably continue to be as busy, if not busier, with, with the additional kids.
Okay, Commissioner Campbell?
Yeah, I, I think the, it's important to point out that a significant portion of that cost goes to the secure portion, which part of our process here and our agreement with our member counties is that we provide the transportation, so.
Right.
So you, that van is still going to be going to, potentially to all, all tent counties and...
Last year, we did just over a thousand, thousand transports and to court appointments, so those vehicles aren't sitting still too long.
Okay. All right, so you're requesting authorization to purchase through the state bid process twenty-two thousand dollars?
That's correct.
And ten, twenty-two thousand, ten.
We'll go approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
My committee assignments, last week I also attended the Sweet Freedom Jail Ministries event. That was a phenomenal event, and to see it over the course of the past two years, double and almost triple in size, I think, is showing that there is community support behind programs like this, and that really helps with, with the mission of the, what they're doing, as well as what we're doing with the mental health addressing at the jail is really important. So that was a good event. I attended the MetroCog meeting, executive committee meeting last week. We're in the process of looking at our accounting services. We've had the same accounting for a long time. Part of the reason is, when we go up for RFPs, it's the only agency that replies, and so we're kind of wanting some more out of what that is, and so we're in the process of having discussions to advertise and possibly get some, some different representation there. We talked a little bit about some CDs that we've had for a while, and if it would be best to cash those out. Part of what's going on is there's a intense backlog with North Dakota DOT and some federal funds, to the point where there's billing from December that has not been paid out, and so they're kind of in a bind there. But it, we'll take it as it comes until hopefully we get an executive director in there and they can figure that out. Talked about our existing HR services contract with West Fargo. As you know, we've used that considerably over the last year. It's been a beneficial service, but we just wanted to make sure we had some stuff in writing there. Talked about some policies and procedure, manual updates, minor things that have been changed over the last couple of years that we want to revert back on. This will all go to the, the general board. And then talked a little bit about the executive director status. We will be having interviews with a pool of candidates on Thursday, so I'm hopeful that we'll be able to find, find a replacement there. And then yesterday, I attended the law library meeting. Good discussion that continued. The operational reserve is consistent, and as you know, we've added some legal services on Thursdays downstairs in addition to law library services, and that has been consistently being used, three to four people each time. There's two hours of availability. We'll watch that to see if that's something that we need to expand the hours or have another individual. But Judge Fritz said from their perspective, it's been incredibly helpful to clear up some wasted time in terms of hearings where people don't have documents prepared. So they've really noticed a difference, and so that's always good to see. And then we talked a little bit about the terminals. Access at the Livingston Lord at MSU continues to kind of be difficult because it's, it's hard to find where that terminal is specifically. So we talked about what could be done to make that more visible. I put up the suggestion that we stay on top of the jail terminal in terms of when the transition happens this fall to make sure that, that any technical needs are addressed before they move that so that the service is not interrupted. So I feel good. I'll have that nailed down. That concludes my reports. Brian, do you want to...
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I attended that legislative meeting last Tuesday in, in Dilworth with Commissioner Gross, and, and we had two of our legislators there, Senator Ekin and Representative Markort. What they, they talked about the taxes, and, and they, they spent a little bit of time on the fact that Minnesota needs to change its state income tax because the, with the federal change, it said if they don't do some law changes this session, it will result in an increase in the income taxes for the Minnesota residents, even though there's been a reduction in the, in the federal tax. So they need to do some, some work on that. One of the, the issues that they said they had, and I think we brought you guys up to speed on this, but the Minnesota, or I'll call it motor vehicle, it's the Marley, Marlo bill, they did put ten million dollars in there. They said it would transfer funds from one account within the motor vehicle department or the public safety to the other. And they, they're right now, they have an extension to the, for the real IDs to October first. And they talked about some of the other options. But then they also said they're going to be looking at putting additional monies into the school system that can be used in a couple of different ways. In the school safety, our SROs, you know, school resource officers, the police officers that are in the school, or in the behavioral health, or they can split it however the district feels it necessary to do, because they're seeing, as we all are, behavioral health issues with youth as well as adults. They did talk about the Minnesota care a little bit. They talked about transportation costs, and, and there was dialogue with the crowd there about raising taxes and, and the gas tax, and it's, it's, it's really truly a user's fee versus a tax. And then what, which I thought was really interesting, and since Representative Markort threw it out at the public meeting, I'll, I'll throw it out here as well. He said he hasn't pursued this at all, but he has an idea that he would like to pursue in regards to funding social services. And that is the consideration or the review of looking at a sales tax to cover social services. And so we had a little bit of a discussion about that at that. And just for example, I, Clay County's example was, you know, we, we levy about nine million dollars, between eight and a half and nine million dollars, which is about half of the social services budget. Well, if you look at one percent on our levy raises about three hundred thousand dollars, you're talking twenty-five to thirty percent of our, if, if they were to reduce that, we could reduce our levy a great deal. It would increase, of course, the sales tax, but it's, it's something for discussion purposes. And because of all of the mandates and things that the states puts on this, and that the social services are mandated statewide, that it just seems like it's a fair approach to look at, and, and it'll create a lot of discussion. But I thought it was interesting that he was bold enough to step out with that discussion point anyway. So we'll see where that goes. I know it sure helped the county levy, but anyway, that was, that was that.
Did I, Commissioner Gross, did I leave anything out of that to cut off?
Yeah, they talked a lot about the Minnesota taxes, you know, that...
Yeah.
How we're going to have to change, our people are going to watch, how they would all, because if Minnesota keeps following what they're doing now and do nothing, it's really going to affect them a lot.
Yes, and, and very good point. I'm glad you brought that up, because the farm-school bonding, and, you know, the, they talk about what's been discussed about that, that farmland doesn't create a lot... about what's been discussed about that, that farmland doesn't create a lot of these problems with social problems that we're having that cost taxpayers a lot of money, but yet they're bearing a big burden of this, and you see it in our general levy. And that's why a sales tax, and we've talked about that with the correctional facility and the law enforcement center, that everybody should share in the cost of that. So I think it's a real good discussion to have. Okay, and yeah, I attended that jail ministry as well. I thought that was really good. You covered that very well. Spent quite a good time on some personnel issues. We did the juvenile construction bid review. That's already been mentioned. Joint powers of the school, that's already been mentioned as well. Met with the city manager after the joint powers meeting on a couple of different subjects. And one was this township road that is out by Blue Stem, and the city and the township are, you know, dealing with that. I think you brought that up before, Madam Chair, in regards to it. It's a township road, but she just wanted to inform me of what's going back and forth with them. And the county gets thrown into it a little bit because our county engineers said this is what needs to happen. You need to put a decent layer of gravel on it, and then you need to chloride it to keep the dust down and things. So that discussion's kind of going back and forth.
You know, and I think I would, just from our perspective, even though it's not our road, I think it's important that we can continue to kind of help facilitate that. From my perspective, to not have a township residence on that road, and we all know Blue Stem, now that Jane Presents is doing concerts out there, there's a significant amount of traffic that happens there, and I think whatever cost would be incurred between the city or township is minimal. And so if we can help facilitate that conversation, that's important.
Madam Chair, I'm glad to hear you say that because it is a, it is a economic motivator in South Morehead, bringing people across the river on fire when that's who's using that township road, but it...
And I think the complaints are coming from city residents that live in that development to the north, correct?
Okay, yeah, that's exactly right. Okay, then we had management team meeting last week, and we've got another meeting down here with Jenny on some personnel issues, and I guess Marja. Met with Georgia and Darren on some personnel issues, and Lori and I met on a couple of different things. So with that, Madam Chair, I think I've dragged my report out long enough here, so...
Yes.
You can go on.
Thank you. All right. We will move to our number eight item, which is the pre-sale report for 7.3 million general obligation jail bonds to finance the juvenile detention expansion project. Lori is here, as well as Shelley Eldridge and Brian Berg. Good morning. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair. I'll lead it off. I guess you've already introduced everybody that's here, and we want to talk about the pre-sale report. And Shelley Eldridge has supplied us with some information and a resolution that we will ask for, will be approved hopefully by the end of her discussion. So I'll turn it over to her, Madam Chair.
All right.
Good morning.
Good morning.
You have in your packet a pre-sale report. I'm sure you're familiar with pre-sale reports. We've seen a few of them in the last...
Make sure you pull the microphone forward. Thank you. Part of hearing.
So we'll walk through the pre-sale report. We're looking at 7.3 million in general obligation jail bonds, and this is to finance costs related to the juvenile detention center project that's proposed to be built.
Okay.
Statutes that we're issuing under is 475, which is the general bonding statute, and 641, which is the jail bond statute. There's a number of limitations in that statute, and the county is well under both of those limitations, because the property taxes is being pledged to pay 100% of the debt service. It's subject to your debt limit, but again, you have a substantial debt limit, so you're well under that with all of your other obligations that are subject to that debt limit, as well as you have other jail bonds outstanding, and they also, combined with this, you're under that limit. We're looking at a 21-year term with principal due 2020 to 2039. Interest will start in February of 2019. And we're starting that because the first time you can levy will be 19 for collection and 20. You will be issuing under 10 million, so in the last year, the facility next door was over the bank qualification limit, anticipating there won't be any more bonds this year. So we'll be able to, again, offer these as bank qualified. That means that banks can bid on them and receive the double tax exempt status, which means we get, theoretically, we'll get more bids and better bids. Again, this is, we're able to do the state credit enhancement program with, through the PFA, and that will bump the rating of the, of the bonds up one notch, and given, again, the size of the issue, that'll result in some significant interest savings. The basis for our recommendation is that these are the types of bonds that you've done in the past, and it's the best option as far as the legal options that we have available. So we'll be putting them out to bid on the national market for national underwriters and national banks like we have in the past. You all remember what a premium bid is. We've seen those pretty regularly in the past, you know, five, six years. And again, at this point, you know, if we get a premium bid, we can either reduce the bond, or we can keep some of the premium for project, or we can keep all of it. And I think in discussing with Lori, we're going to determine that on the day of the sale, how much to keep, how much to reduce, and we'll be bringing that back to you the day, the day after the sale. We've looked at your other outstanding debt, and we don't see at this point any, any opportunity to refinance anything that you have outstanding right now. With the, with the new rules and regulations or the new law that came into effect, advanced refundings are no longer on the table, so we basically have to wait for the call dates for the, for the bonds. These called, these bonds are callable in '27 for '28 and after, so that means prepaying or refinancing or restructuring would be available after 2027, which is about, about halfway through the duration of the bond, which is pretty standard as far as refinancing. Basically, the risk factors for this is if, you know, everybody always pays their taxes on time and in full, right? But the, the risk factor is that you have a substantial amount of delinquent taxes collected. That would mean that you need to find other funds from the county to, to pay your debt service because it is a general obligation backed by the full faith and credit of the county. So the other service providers are the same, same cast of characters that we've been working with in the past. Dorsey and Whitney is your bond counsel. Bond Trust Services is the paying agent. Again, I need to disclose that Bond Trust Services is a subsidiary of Ellers and Associates. And we'll be talking to Standard and Poor's and getting an underlying rating for the credit enhancement. So if you decide to proceed today, the week of April 30th, you should receive that wonderful preliminary official statement, and I'm sure you all read cover to cover. It's just such a riveting document, but it is an important document for the market. And so you're welcome to take a look at it and digest it and pick it apart and tell us what you want us to change, or you can put it...
I'll write it.
You can, it's up to you what you do, it's your document. We'll also have a rating call that same week. We will be taking bids the day before, as we did last time, probably like noonish, and then we will bring, on the 15th, we'll bring the results to you. We'll work with Lori and Brian as far as whatever premium is, so that when we bring the results to you the next day, you know, we'll be ready to go. The other documents included are, again, the sources and uses. We're allowing a 1.2% discount. Discount, again, is like points on your mortgage. It gives the underwriters a fee, or discloses an underwriting fee for their work in purchasing or buying the bonds and doing the distribution and that type of thing. The theory there is, as like when you're doing a mortgage, if you pay upfront, you will get lower rates. There is capitalized interest for a year, and that's included in the bond. So we're looking at about $7 million in project costs or available for projects, $145,000 in that, that first interest until you get your property taxes in, and then discount your cost of issuance. Your cost of issuance includes our fees, your bond counsel fees, and the rating agency fees. We've estimated, we've put about a 25 basis point cushion in what the current markets are, which is what you've seen in the past. And so if the market, and again, our, my financial term doesn't go stupid, we should be able, you know, we have high hopes that we'll get better bids and better rates than what we've estimated. The next page basically outlines the debt service at the 105% that's required by law for levy. And then my favorite, of course, is the picture. Kind of shows, I feel like, you know, look like, it kind of shows where the market's been. And as you can see, we're the green line or the bottom line, and it's been, it's been trending up since, since November and December, which I guess kind of sort of makes sense. But still looking at the, it's still a 3.88, which is the average of the, it's the bond buyers index, which is the average of all of the muni bonds that were on the market last week. And for 20 years, a 3.88 still isn't, isn't bad. And because of the general obligation backing behind these bonds, we're estimating a 3.4. So we would expect something below the national average because of the general obligation. This includes all of the muni, the revenue bonds and that type of thing that, so the, the resolution that you have attached, so that we didn't get confused, we consolidated the two resolutions into one this time, so there's one resolution for you to consider. And this resolution is twofold. It's first calling for the sale of the bonds, and then it's also authorizing the county administrator and the county chair to execute the documents, to enter into an agreement with the PFA for the, for the credit enhancement program.
The resolution on a number?
Twenty, Madam Chair.
It's 2018.
Twenty eighteen eighteen.
Twenty eighteen eighteen.
Eighteen.
Any questions for Shelley, Lori, or Brian?
Well...
Well, Madam Chair, we were having a little discussion about this, and the project costs are about 7.2 to 7.3 million dollars. The bonding is requesting for 7.3, and as you see, the costs are then rolled into the bond. We had kind of talked about, the last bonding have been premium bonds, so we've had some flexibility in the dollars amounts as they closer, but maybe it would be wise to have a 7.5 bond versus a 7.3 requested?
Unless you're confident that we would get a premium bid. So I'm not comfortable. Then I would feel more comfortable with a 7.5.
Right, because we could always...
We can always lower it.
You can always, yeah, that's exactly right.
Comments? Commissioner Campbell?
Yeah, if the, if the premium comes in, then we can, we could adjust the down rate. But also, the R7, what we approved today after we'd get our funds from Cass County, provided that all the soft issues are meet what's been anticipated, we would need cash funds of 7.2 plus some change, 7.2 million plus some change. But one of the things that we do not have in, in that either is the first year interest of 145,000. We don't have that incorporated in our cash needs.
No, Madam Chair, you're right, but it is included in the...
In the, in the payment.
In the payments, yes.
Yeah, it's included in the payment, but those are, that's cash that's still going to be needed, you know, that, so, so I would, I would think that, oh, I see.
It's included.
It is included in the bond.
It's included in the, okay, all right, all right. But I would think that the, I think we should change that 7.3 to 7.5, and then, and then next month, we have the ability, if there's a premium, to bring that right back down.
Right.
It's just that we don't want to be short on cash to pay the bills.
Board's thoughts on that?
I agree.
I'm with me.
Commissioner Gross?
So, so in the resolution, we would just be, the resolution would be changed to reach 7.5.
That's correct.
It's just in the one spot, right?
Couple spots.
Two spots on there.
I'll move the resolution to change to 7.5.
We have a motion to approve Resolution 2018-18 with the issuance of 7.5 million.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. So we'll see you at the beginning of May.
May 5. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Hope rates go down a little bit. All right, anything further? If not, we are adjourned.